Now call meeting in order at six o'clock. To go ahead and take a roll. And number eight, commission, Cherokee Board of Education for School Board Appreciation Month.
Quickly, you each have a certificate there with you for School Board Appreciation Month, which is recognized in January. And, you know, we just want to take a little time here to say thank you. A lot of times, more than enough, you don't hear that enough as board members. You guys do a lot here in the area of the community and advocate for students and parents and teachers. And so, you know, we just take a little time here and make a point to say thank you. You're welcome. Good evening, Jennifer. Are you all set? Sorry, I know you just walked me out.
That's okay.
You're number two on the list.
No, it's okay.
So be rewarded to hear a presentation from Alphatah County Assessor Jennifer Roach. And if you're ready. Sorry to throw you right into it.
I'm used to it. Um, I'm handing you guys out just a little bit of the excise board report that was reported to the state auditor's office in July. Well, yeah, to end of July. So this is what your budget made proceeds. The third page, the state auditor's office required us to do a new report this year. And I really like it because the third plate page has a graph. This next page on legal science paper is something I've handed to Bryce before. I don't know if he showed it to you. With my dire predictions for the future, which Bryce, I think, aren't quite that bad.
That's good.
So, oh, I'm not coming with good news, but glad. I wanted to start off by telling you guys that we have about fifty-five oil and gas and wind companies in the county, eighteen of which of those operate in Cherokee School District, none of which are winded. Um, every year since I've been in office, I've been involved in at least five lawsuits per year. Currently in 2022, we're only at two lawsuits. And that's because we've lost all the others. So, um, the oil and gas companies that we have lost to have been BCE Mock Compressors, BCE Mock Saltwater Disposal Wells, and Sandridge Saltwater Disposal Wells. Bryce asked me to let you guys know a little bit about why are we losing? That's the question on my mind, too. Nobody gets into a fight expecting to lose. When I came into office, Grant County and Woods County and Major County were already in the fight with saltwater disposal wells. The appraisers across the state were holding to a Supreme Court case called the Cumberland case that said basically, saltwater disposal wells on the same system are exempt. But they identified an exempt same system as the water comes off a well and is injected back into a saltwater disposal well in the same section. The oil and gas companies started fighting this, saying, no, it doesn't matter if the system is thirty miles apart. If we have pipelines, all of that pipeline is part of that saltwater disposal well system. And the assessor said, no, it's not, no, it's not. Because the Cumberland case kind of identified that now you have to take it off the same section to put it back into the saltwater disposal well for that to be exempt. So that was the legal argument that we were fighting over. We got into the fight late, but it was still holding the same argument that Grant, Woods, Major were fighting. That case got decided early part of 2022. And it was in favor of the oil and gas companies. So now, saltwater disposal well that is owned by an oil company, if they have the same owner, all that pipe, barrels, tanks, barrels, some of the compression stuff, it's all exempt from ad lorm. There's still a little bit of talk that they claim that it is being claimed as gross production assets, which is a smaller asset ratio. But so far, I'm not sure that they have actually provided the documentation that they are assessing it that way. I think they're maybe forgetting some things, but that has been the fight. I think it was the right thing to do at the time. I don't think it came out in our favor. And so that was the case with BCE Mock had some saltwater disposal wells and Sandridge had some saltwater disposal wells. So those were those two cases. The third case that we lost was a BCE Mock, and it was compressors. And in Cherokee School District, I think that was like $600,000 worth of compressors. Tax dollars, that's like $60,000. And then the school gives about seventy-five percent of that. The compressors, uh, the appraisers have looked at compressors. And even in all of our education, you can't go, oh, there's compressor, that's taxable either one way or another. It depends on how the compressor is piped into the system. Sometimes compressors are used to push oil down pipeline towards production. And sometimes they are used to actually push water down into the hole to pull the oil up the other side. The company that owned the compressors before BCE Mock, I'm not sure if I can say their name because they weren't involved in the lawsuit, they assessed them. They paid taxes on them. They said, yeah, they're being used for X, Y, Z, and they're taxable. When BCE Mock purchased them, they purchased them with a really weird contract that wasn't signed until May, but it backdated the purchase date to January one. So they were pulling the little stuff with contracts, which is fine. But they automatically said, no, they're exempt because we're using them to push water down to pull the oil up. And we're like, well, the previous company didn't say that, they weren't. But it was like pulling teeth to get the information, the proof that they were, they had changed the way that the compressors were operating. So that was also a fight that is like, we have one company assessing these things and paying taxes on them. And because they sold, now instead you're saying they're being used in a different way. We also lost that case. I cannot tell you what evidence was presented. It would be a matter of swearing affidavits from oil pumpers, I'm assuming. I'm making some assumptions there that, I don't know how those compressors were piped. So those are the two cases that we lost, and those are why we took it to the fight. The two companies that are left in lawsuit, again, because they're not settled, I'm not going to say their names. They're pipelines. So they are not saltwater disposal wells, and they are not compressors, they are pipelines. One of the companies has sued us in 2020, even though they did not file a protest. They, we have them valued at about $21 million a year worth of pipelines. And they want them valued at 1.5 million. They want to go from 20 million to 1.5. In 2020, they settled that case because they realized I had some evidence that they didn't file a protest. Guess what they settled it for? They settled for 20.5 million. Lost a half a million dollars because they're like, yeah, it, we'll sign off that it is worth 20.5. When you say it's worth 21, so they signed it. They said, yeah, so we're going to sue you the next year and say, no, it's worth 1.5. So we are still in lawsuits over that pipeline for 2021 and 2022. And they're claiming that it's worth 1.5 million, and our appraiser says, no, it's worth more than like 21.
So can I ask you a question on that? So they filed, they didn't file a protest in the prior year while they're settling. Did they file a protest for this year?
Twenty twenty, they did file a protest for 2021 and 2022. They got their paperwork together. The tax dollar difference to that is 227,554, of which Cherokee School Districts is due 165,300,000. That's what's on the line for you. The rest of it's EMS and Simp County and a little bit of both counties.
The problem is that now that they've been rewarded, they're going to, it's a new standard, new business strategy that they're going to probably do every year, and why wouldn't they?
Right, because the taxes on a half a million dollars pays for their attorneys.
Yeah, for sure. My question that I had trouble trying to understand, you know, there's a lot of them, but the main thing is how do you, who lets them win a hundred percent of what they're after? Like, that's, that's kind of unique, and that makes me wonder, like, are we dealing with, like, some corruption up the line?
I can't answer that.
I know you can't.
I think that that's, um, that's in the hands of the attorney. I don't know if you guys have ever been to court over oil and gas, but there's a lot of talk about production rates, the size of pipelines, the size of compressors, what percentage of a compressor is being used to push down hole, and what percent of it is being used to push towards production plants. And the oil companies aren't providing me the paperwork, so by the time I see it, it's usually in my attorney's box. And sometimes I think it's the, the way that they talk about oil and gas statutes, gross production statutes, as to what is taxable and what is not, and what is allowable and what is not. Even I get going in loops.
But when you agree until we get some legislators that back our schools to help protect us for the money that's owed to us, that we get it, that they're going to just hire the attorneys and take it every year?
Yeah, honestly, yes and no. I think there could be some clarification from the legislature. However, the legislatures aren't oil and gas experts. When they write that this thing is taxable, they don't necessarily know what it's impacting or not. So I think honestly, it listens to both sides of the tax reps, the oil companies, and the appraisers to know the implications of what the laws will have. But at this point, um, I don't know if they understand what they're writing. I don't know if they understand what they're voting on. We just got a bill passed last year that said the assessors no longer allowed to use their appraiser in the protest. The oil and gas company gets to use their professionals, I don't get to use my appraiser.
And there was some other proposed legislation last year, I think, and more often you can correct me, but I think Representative Newton even proposed some legislation that would allow you to discuss with other assessors.
Yes, and that failed.
And that failed.
And that failed.
Which should have, oh, have some lines of communication.
There was also legislation that proposed that assessors were required to get some additional education in oil and gas fields, and that failed.
And so, just so I, I just want to clarify.
I cannot talk to Woods County about the same company.
I understand that, I understand that.
Yeah, that's what Bryce is.
But right now, we, so we've lost out of this deal 165K. For, and that's for 2022?
2022, what is on the line is $165,000. There's a second pipeline company that has another 19,761 tied up for you.
But we better not plan on getting any of that either, so, you know.
Unfortunately, that's what I've told Bryce, is that I, I think all the legal arguments are there. I just cannot believe that we're not getting our point across, considering the legal arguments I've looked at in the past, but no.
Well, it's frustrating.
No, I told him I'm scared.
We all obviously feel, we all feel the frustration because, I mean, I don't think that we're expecting anybody, even these oil and gas companies and these large corporations, to pay more than their fair share.
No.
It's the point of being able to argue what's fair. My, one question I have, Jennifer, is, you know, you've talked about having that third-party assessor that comes in and helps out with that. So when they come in with the number and they say, no, we think that it's like you said, the 1.5 instead of the 20?
Yes.
Who gets that number for them? Where does that come from on their side?
They don't tell us where they came up with their number.
And they don't have to, right?
They don't have to. However, they protest with me, and usually I try to settle. So we actually get about, out of those eighteen companies that protest, they do what's called an informal protest. I will try to meet, see if there's any middle ground. And we actually do settle about fifteen of those before it gets to the Board of Equalization. Once it gets to the Board of Equalization, it's called a formal protest. In that formal protest, they have to provide documentation that proves their value. So if you're going to protest your house, I will help you fill out paperwork. But you're going to tell me where I'm wrong. You're not going to say, you're wrong, and I'm not explaining why. The, the board has no authority to change it unless they provide documentation. And they say, we're not going to mess with you, we'll see you in court. They don't want to settle. They don't want to settle, they have no inclination to provide you any documentation. They'll save it for their attorneys, and they'll bury my attorney, and then they'll drag it out. That's what happens.
And the money, the money has to be paid for those taxes, but it goes into the estero, which draws interest. And they're making money on it when they return.
Yeah, so the, even just a half a million dollars on the one company that we did settle, that was about $45,000 that they got returned back, which the schools did give the other, and it was a large sum. And that's countywide, so I couldn't tell you what the breakdown per school district was. But, yeah, they're making money, they're paying their attorneys, and they, we had, we had one company this year, and I had open meetings on it because it was, so it's public record. But, and it was Woods County, they never protested, never protested. They got their tax bill and said, oh, who, we meant to, can you do a tax rule correction for us? It's going to short out the school districts $80,000, but we want a tax rule correction now, please. What do I do about? Because you guys' checks are coming out first of the week, so is Alvis. So I call up the superintendent and said, hey, do you mind if I change this and short you $80,000 this week? And he says, yeah, I kind of think I mind. I said, okay, they're going to sue us, because that's what they tell me on the phone. They call me up and say, I want a tax rule correction, or else I will sue you. That's as far as their conversation's going. It's not, I want to prove something to you, I think you're wrong, can we have a discussion? It's not that.
And one of the hearings I remember sitting in last year, it seemed like all the paperwork was in order, but it still didn't matter when it came out. And that was, I mean, I think anybody that was there would agree that that's how it played out. And that was here in Alphatah County.
I'm sorry, I forget a little bit.
Sorry, I lost my train of thought, I had another question. Well, here's my question for you, Jennifer. What, what can we do? Do you have things that you need that maybe that as a school and a board that, that you feel like is fair? And like I said, I know you're not trying to leverage an advantage for the schools, you're trying to do what's fair. So what can, what is it that you feel like maybe we could do to advocate for some things?
Clearer legislation that actually takes the opinion of the appraisers. I don't know what that looks like, I don't write bills. I've always seen my role as kind of a middleman between fair taxes, what is fair, and the schools which benefit from it. And a three-way between the statutes, what, what is allowable by law and what is not. Um, I think it was Roland Peterson that presented the bill for more education for the assessors on what we exactly are supposed to be doing and what we're not. Honestly, I wish that one would have passed. So rerun that bill. And I think they really need, there has been some legislatures who have flat told up the Assessors Association across the state, whether it's me or different assessors, to our faces. We don't like your appraiser, he's rough. Do you know what our appraiser does? He stands up and he gets mad, and he says, this ain't right, and it comes off rough. He's not the guy that's going to just be like, yeah, let's have a nice conversation. No, he kind of comes in and is a little bit of a shield for us. For, and, and he will work, too. He works very hard to try to get a, a compromise that we can all live with. If the compromise is $20,000, sometimes I'll take it just to save you guys the legal expense. Because at the end of the day, my attorneys are paid out of my visual inspection budget, which is paid for proportionately by the schools, the VOTECs, the county, the EMS. Anybody who gets funds from those tax dollars proportionally pays for my visual inspection budget, and hence also my attorneys. So when I'm incurring attorney bills, and that started two years ago, we've been paying attorneys, but counties paid attorney bills for the last, since 2018 with no reimbursement. They just picked it up out of county general. And in the last two years, maybe three now, I think we're working on our third year that we've put, we've taken those attorney bills out of that. So when we go to fight, I do weigh the, what is it going to cost you?
So this did go to court, went to a, went to a court where a judgment was made.
Supreme Court.
Okay.
Oklahoma Supreme Court.
So we have a court that, or a judge that said, you're going to get a hundred percent of what you're asking. It wasn't like a verbal agreement or a written agreement between two parties. It was, um...
Sort of, yes and no. The BCE Mock case went all the way to the state Supreme Court. And in Woods County, they were fighting the same issue with saltwater disposal wells with Sandridge. And they both went to the state Supreme Court. When that decision was handed down, my Sandridge case had not made it to the state Supreme Court, but we...
Do you know who the judge was, or who's in that?
I, I could look because I have that, and the judge didn't really, it didn't get heard at the state Supreme Court, but they made a judgment and had a judge sign off on it. So I do not know the name of the judge, but I could look that up. But the Sandridge case, because mine had not even made it to the state Supreme Court in light of the Sandridge case with Woods County and the BCE Mock case with me, all related to saltwater disposal, there was an agreed journal entry for Sandridge on our part for 2020 and 2021 that was in, we agreed to it in light of the, the Supreme Court decisions that were handed down on other cases. So that's a yes and no.
And when did we find out, Bryce, that we looked like we weren't going to get the money that was owed to us? And then that throws a wrench in our, you know, strategic planning and... Well, I will say, I feel like, you know, since I've been here, like Jennifer and I have communicated well. There are timelines that are in place that she has to report to us. Right. What those evaluations are going to be, along with the expected protest. And so, having that information, it does help. But, you know, we have to plan so conservatively now, because we're planning as if we don't get any of it. And then if they do happen to settle and we get some, you know, that's great. But I, I don't think that it's like it was when these tax protests first started, where planned for, we thought we were going to get this money. Well, you get a little bit of it, not get zero. Right, so, I mean, I don't know if that answers your question. But, I mean, we're, we're getting, and that's what this, this chart...
Yeah, so let me explain the chart to you.
Yeah, this has been pretty helpful.
A little bit. Also, Cory, I will add to that, that yes, I have timelines. I can't stick to a timeline if they're not filling out their paperwork, because it is absolutely hitting us like surprises.
So they're just bogging your office down, too?
They are, but I can't, I can't say, you know, oh, Chad Bruch wants to file taxes, let me just take care of that paperwork for him. I, I mean, file protests, I can't just arbitrarily say, oh, yeah, I think you will probably disagree, let me file that for you. Or let me just tell the schools you're going to, even if I have no idea if you are or not. So when they're not filing their paperwork, it actually does hurt all of us. And I do think that would be a really good statute. If they do not file the, I don't know how they're getting away with that. If they don't file, because the, the statutes are very clear on the timelines. They have thirty days to file a protest. It's actually listed on the form on how to file a protest, what their timeline is. And they get the form, and then they never file, I mean, it's just, I, I'm, if they don't follow the due diligence set forth by the existing statutes and they're winning anyway, I don't know, I don't know what the answer to that is. The, the chart, I did not update it. But every year, when I first started in 2018, 19, we were getting about five million in protests. So the orange line kind of shows you an unprotested net assessed value. I love comparing unprotested, well, I did use to, because I thought you could count on it. I thought that was something you could count on. So I always talked to Bryce about what was unprotested. And we were getting that protests in about $5 million difference. So the red line shows what the net assessed value is, and that was what was being reported to the excise board. The problem was, and the state auditor's office caught this and now has fixed that in our, in our reporting to the state, was the excise board was getting a supplemental list to the excise board report, and every county did that list different. So the state auditor's office said, you know what? We're going to report protests the same way across the entire state. And that's how our graphs and our new excise board report evolved. It is a little clearer as to how that looks. But the net assessed value, I do foresee, um, losing value to court cases. We tend to lose a little bit of value for some depreciation. Compressors are being moved out, which they're off now anyway. But there is some, we don't have any oil rigs, we haven't had any oil rigs in the county on January 1 the last two years, whereas we used to have some of those. There is equipment that was being taxed that is being moved out. The oil boom is slowed down. I was estimating a continuance of about five million in protests per year. But this year, the, the amount between the two companies that are protesting that have me in lawsuits is 2.8, and I had estimated it at five. So it's not quite, and I think eventually, win or lose, we're going to come out to a better understanding of what to expect versus unprotested net assessed value. Either I will be forced to lower it, and those lines will come together because the red line is going to drop, or there'll be some sort of legislation clear up, and maybe we'll have fewer protests because things will be clearer as to what is taxable and what is not, and the red line will come up. I'm not sure where that's going to end up right now.
So we asked this, there's obviously companies that are protesting at, at the moment.
Yes.
But now that these other companies have won their protests and won the lawsuits, are we anticipating that the other companies are going to start jumping on board, and that's going to impact even way more?
I am.
More so than what, what's here on your graph?
Yeah, there's blood and water.
Not more so than what's on the graph. That would be my fear. I've told Bryce that I think the graph is the worst-case scenario. If I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. I'm not a fortune teller, or I just can't look into the crystal ball. But even with those predictions of thinking more companies could easily jump on board, there's actually tax preps, tax representative companies that actually go out and try to get oil companies to join them because they promise them that they can save money on their taxes. It's a marketing scheme for the tax representative. And there's an attorney in Oklahoma who says, I'll take you as a client, because I can win. And he does. But they are marketing themselves as, we will help you.
Yeah, it's a tool, but success, it's been pretty, been pretty successful.
I know Bryce has kind of confirmed, and his right has confirmed, but our appraiser and our attorney will actually be in town tomorrow. but our appraiser and our attorney will actually be in town tomorrow. They are building from about 12:30 to 3:00. The, it's kinda be available to maybe answer some questions. I don't know how much time that we'll have to answer some individualized questions like that.
And they're not really gonna be going over school stuff?
It will not be, it will not be specific to any school or any company.
Okay. Do you know that it will be oil company people there?
Um, none have confirmed that, no.
Representatives?
No, there is, there's a few oil and gas tax representatives that will talk to me.
Yeah.
But a lot of times, so the informal protest, by law, I have to give them three days to call me to have the meeting. So I email them. They don't call me. But they still go ahead and formally protest also. They won't even talk to me.
It's public information though, right?
No.
Whoever...
Not always.
When, when is it gonna be public of?
I mean, so...
The companies that benefited from this, and who did it, who pulled the strings?
When they go to court and it's filed and there's a decision. That's why I can discuss Sandridge and BCE mock, but I cannot discuss the other two companies that are currently suing. Um, so, no, I can't discuss anything, everything. So. I can tell you amounts.
Well, that's fine. I mean, there's not that many companies we can narrow it down if we were going dark on a board, but, um, so that's not...
You might be surprised. You might be surprised, 'cause I was. I was surprised when I got to the office. I was like, "Really? I did not know this." So, um...
It's just frustrating. It made, it screams corruption to me and, um...
Um...
Know how to get away from it.
I...
It's obviously better.
I think what would be nice for the legislature to clear some things up, if they would graciously disregard some of the passion that comes out from the Assessors Association and our appraisers, and say, "Okay, look, I know you're jumping up and down and screaming, but let's actually calm down and talk." And I think the Assessors Association as a whole has kinda taken that approach that we've jumped up and down and screamed and said, "Listen," but that approach hasn't really worked. So as an association, we've been encouraged to maybe tone down what we're saying. But at the end of the day, there's seventy-seven of us. And we're the big bad tax people. I, I mean, do you guys like it when I show up to your house? No? You go, "No, I'm gonna hide that back behind a bush." It's saving you ten dollars. I'm gonna hide this addition to my house. Saving you a hundred dollars. When an oil company says, "I'm gonna hide," they're gonna hide. But nobody likes the assessor to come to their house. The legislature, I go to their house too. They don't like it when I go. I don't like it when I have to look at my tax bill either. But the assessors have kinda been looked at as the biggest bad tax people. And the law has to be written so that it is fair to protest because our offices are not foolproof. I have made mistakes. I am happy to help someone fill out a protest or even do it to actual correction if I have made a mistake. I was assessing a tractor for a lady my first year, accidentally put an extra zero on the end. She says she about got a heart attack when she got her tax bill. So, it had an extra zero on the end too. So, um, I'm happy to correct my faults, and I do wanna treat people fairly. But you can't tell me if you're settling for twenty million, but it's really worth 1.5. There's gotta be something. Either I'm doing something a little bit wrong, or they're doing something a little bit wrong. But we're not that far off. We shouldn't be that far off.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Jennifer, really thank you for coming in and sharing some light on it.
No.
Well, it's not been a fun task, but we appreciate it.
If I can do anything else for you. Bryce, I think, I think better communication. Maybe I just start sending you an email once a month, and you can do with it what you want. That way I'm not bothering you.
You're not bothering me. Not bothering me.
Good stuff. Thank you all for your time.
Yep, thanks Jennifer.
And always reach out if you need it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Leads us to number two, approval of the consent agenda, A through E.
Um, I did wanna make sure that I mentioned, uh, on the minutes of the December meeting, because of some clerical things and federal programs, we approved in payroll, uh, which was on the consent agenda at the December meeting. But we did, uh, include the retention stipends that we paid out to everybody. And we just, we, we have to mention that so that those are reflected in the, in the minutes. And so, uh, that's part of that for those, for those minutes in December. B, in conferences. Really, um, really nothing out of the ordinary. There's gonna be two sheets. And that's because the last part of, uh, December and then a few here in the first part of January. But, um, really everything there is our normal monthly expenses. If there's a number out to the left or to the right written down, those are federal program numbers. Like I said, it's all, all basically utilities. We did purchase some library books, uh, in junior high, so that, that is on, um, this, this page. For thirty-one hundred, thirty dollars and thirty-two cents. So other than that, things pretty much the same there. Apparel's the same. AC Services, we had to have a little bit of a heater repair. Kind of the building fund. Benefit has plus some spring. And, uh, chaltrium. Same. Question about any of those on B? Treasury report, um, I think everything looks pretty good there, kinda like it did, um, last month. We will be getting, um, have a warrant check, at least the first one, uh, here pretty soon. And gross production, uh, was up again, uh, last month. So, like I said, things right now, as far as our budget and general fund, looks good. Other funds are kinda holding steady, so... And then activity fund, uh, Kendra, do you have anything there? And we have no fundraiser requests turned in. Nothing for E.
Bryce, I'm sorry, but let me ask you, what, what did you need on the, uh, December 5th meeting added?
Um, it's there. I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned it because it just looks a little different than the notes.
Oh, okay, okay.
It just says, "Including the approval of retention stipends."
I see, I see.
And those were part of payroll. We just, I need to make sure that we did mention that those were true, just part of payroll in December. It can show in the minutes.
Roger that. Anybody, everybody all set? You got any questions on the consent agenda, A through E? If no, I'll confirm motion. Desiree made a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Heather, a second?
Lilith?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number three, principals reports.
Um, at the elementary, we started off the year with six new students. We had six students join us from after break. We did lose one student, so we're up five students. The elementary's kinda wrapping up basketball season. We have two basketball games left. We play tomorrow in Jetta against Timberlake at 12:30. And then we'll play next Monday to finish the season, uh, for fifth and sixth with Ringwood, I believe, at home. The after-school program has been going on continuously since August, but, um, I've been able to go to a few meetings, um, about our after-school program. So one thing that we've started, um, this January is kinda restructuring it a little bit, which I think the kids are really enjoying. We're still providing time for them to get help with their homework and work on specific skills and kind of some enrichment for them. And they're still going to the public library, but we've kind of added a component of, of club time. And so, uh, the teachers and I kinda had a good time coming up with some different club options. And so the ones we started with were sports, art, and games. So they've been able to pick a club that they would like to be a part of, and they're getting to do that for a few weeks. So, um, I think it's a good little break for them to have after school, and not, you know, not having to work, giving a little bit of time in the afternoon to kinda relax and do things they enjoy. So, um, our numbers are, what do we have at after school? About forty every day is kind of steady. We have some that are there some days and some they're not, but it's, um, it's a great thing and, um, I think it's going well.
Our November students of the month, I didn't get to get, get those two in December, were high school help Jordan Pym McHenry. And our junior high students of the month for November were Kenna Collins and Zaden Merrill. We'll probably do December, January together since December was very short. Uh, FCCLA competed in, uh, the North One District Star Events. Uh, all first-place runners moved to compete at the North Region Star Events in Bristow in February. And there's a list of, oh, I think we said twenty-one, and these were everyone that I believe placed first, so, uh, there's a lot. Uh, Brad Fells was selected as a CTB Sports Football All-Star. Uh, it's voted on by area, area coaches. The Lady Chiefs were the Cherokee Basketball, uh, International Basketball Tournament runner-up. Abby Guffey and Riley Hensley were selected to all tournament team. Right before Christmas, they played in the Canton Tournament. And Abby Guffey, Carson Shawnbacher, and Colby Roberts were selected on their all tournament teams. Uh, we just completed our tournament, so thanks to AEC for helping sponsor that this year. Uh, it was a big help. And everyone else that helped with it. Three days of twenty-four basketball games. We didn't have a single one going to overtime, so we were pretty much able to go on schedule most of the weekend, which is, everybody liked it. We were a little bit early for several games. People don't really like that, but they really don't like to be in an hour late. So thanks to all the concession help from the boosters, the hospitality sketch, and SCSR FCCLA students, uh, all our gatekeepers. We have teachers who give and gave, but we also have community members giving gate. Everybody that helps, it's, it's a big thing because it takes a lot for three days. By Saturday evening, everybody's pretty, well, a little grouchy. But it turned out really well. Tonight is the Ag Boosters Trophy auction. Um, next week is the Cherokee Trip Basketball Tournament. Uh, once again, it's gonna be in Pioneer again this year. Uh, I have attached brackets for you, so on the back of this, if you're curious, there are brackets for the boys and the girls. The boys will play Thursday, or the, the girls will play Thursday. They will play Ringwood at 12:40. The boys will play Omega at two o'clock, and then depending on the outcomes for Thursday, we will, for the rest of the time. Reminder, there's no school next Friday on the twentieth. It'll be for teacher in services. And she gave, reported her numbers, I believe, we gained since December 1st. Uh, 'cause right there before Christmas, correct, we gained a couple, a couple new students. I think we've gained three high school students and one junior high student, and then we lost one junior high student right after Christmas. So the high school's up three, junior high's holding steady. So I think we're right around a hundred and ten in high school.
Thank you. Keela Lang? So number four, we got a proposed executive session to discuss the employment of certified personnel. So the board may return to open session and vote to employ or find reason not to employ. First of all, taking background checks, discussion of the appraisal of real property, and to discuss the evaluation of employment including salary and contract of Bryce Shawnbacher as superintendent. So the board may return to open session and vote to employ or not to employ Bryce Shawnbacher superintendent. Twenty-five O S three oh seven, B one. I'll make a motion to convene into executive session. Do I have a second?
One second.
Desiree, a second? Samantha?
Collins?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Six forty-six. Time is seven fifty-eight. Go ahead with the minutes.
During the executive session, the board discussed the appraisal of real property and the evaluation and employment including salary and contract of Bryce Shawnbacher as the superintendent.
Thank you. Number five, uh, vote to approve the employment including salary and contract of Bryce Shawnbacher as superintendent of Cherokee Public Schools. I'll make a motion to approve to your contract with amendments.
Collins second.
Heather, a second? Samantha?
Lilith?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
And number six, discussion of vote to approve or not to approve the district's student transfer capacity numbers.
Um, this is something that we have to keep up with every so often. And so, right now, um, these capacity numbers have not changed. According to our enrollment, um, the available spots that we have changes sometimes. We now have to report this, uh, to the State Department quarterly and keep this updated. So that's what we're doing here. Uh, so this has not changed, uh, since we did this previously. Uh, just real quick, uh, capacity in preschool, uh, remains at twenty. Uh, kindergarten would be forty students, as is first grade, second grade, third grade, and fourth grade. Uh, we have a capacity of thirty-two only in fifth grade. And then we have, uh, capacity of forty for grades six and seven, thirty in grade eight, forty in ninth and tenth grade, thirty in grade eleven, and forty in grade twelve. And the differences in those, uh, have to do with either physical space in the classroom or teacher availability, um, or just the way that our schedule works out sometimes in high school, whether or not we can accommodate that many kids in classrooms. So as of now, uh, we have zero room. In preschool, we're full. We have ten spots in kindergarten, four in first grade, eight in second grade, eleven in third grade, two in fourth grade, four in fifth grade, seven in sixth grade, eight in seventh grade, four in eighth grade, seven in ninth grade, sixteen in tenth grade, uh, eleven in eleventh grade, and six in twelfth grade. So, um, I said we do have some room for transfers. We have, as you heard in our principals report, we have received, uh, some new students. We've had some move out. And so that does change that a little bit. But we do have, uh, some room still for growth in those all area levels. So, um, I just, I would make the recommendation that we keep these capacity numbers, uh, on the sheet as they are.
Any, uh, any other discussion or questions on the, uh, transfer capacity numbers? Desiree made a motion to approve. Heather, a second? Heather, a second? Samantha?
Lilith?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number seven, discussion vote to approve or not to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar.
I know this seems like early, always seems really early to do this to me, but that's so we can plan. The, the calendar itself looks very similar to this year's calendar with one change that we feel like will be beneficial to us, and that's around fall break. We have been taking off Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of the week of fall break. Northwest Tech and most of the sending schools there and some other schools in the area too have started taking fall break as Thursday, Friday, and then the following Monday, as opposed to that Wednesday. So it would give us three days being in class that week and then a four-day week following that. And we feel like that would be better. It did kind of cause some confusion and some just minor scheduling issues at the tech this year because a lot of times they're still in school even when we are not and our students are still required to go to class most of those days, so trying to get our calendar lined up with theirs and as many kids as we're sending, it does help out. Professional development days are basically the same. We did like having last Friday off during the tournament. It was a lot less hectic around here and it just made things a little easier. That next year would make that first week back from Christmas just a three-day week because the first falls on Monday. So we would just be in class Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I haven't gotten any complaints from teachers or Mrs. Patterson on that. That week's always tough, especially the elementary. So that would be a little bit shorter week, but we did like having that Friday off, so. Like I said, other than that, our calendar with this year and next year is basically the same and lines up. Just fall break would look a little bit different for us.
Any other questions or discussions on the calendar? I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Desiree, second? Amanda?
Littleton.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Collins. Yes.
Number eight, discuss, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the ten eighty method for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar?
We don't have to really make this decision for a while. I just find it convenient to do it when we approve our calendars, so. As a board, we would approve to use the one thousand eighty hours method versus the hundred and eighty day method. And that just gives us a little bit more control length of day and all those things factor into it. We just have to approve that if that's what we want to do. We have, even with this calendar and these days off with our time, start times, end times, all those things built in. If we had bad weather days and things like that, we would have flexibility with using that ten eighty method.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Desiree's made a motion. Do I have a second? Heather, second? Amanda?
Littleton.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Collins.
Number nine, superintendent's report.
I'll try to keep this pretty quick. Just a few things I wanted to mention. January twenty-seventh, we are going to have a speaker come in, Willie Spears. Mr. Spears played football at Northwestern and was on our national championship team. I would say a long time ago, but I'm not going to say that because that will make me feel old, but. Since then, he's gotten into motivational speaking around the country. He's been at Fairview and Alva and both those schools. I've talked to their coaches and administrators and they just absolutely loved having him. So kind of as part of our climate and culture plans and things that we want to see for our kids, he is going to be here all day. He will be at the elementary for a while, talking to our third through fifth graders. And then he's going to spend some time talking to junior high kids and then high school kids. I think that he has it worked out. He will be here at lunch and he's going to meet at lunch with the FCA when they have their meeting that day. He's very involved in that also. And then he's going to come back and he's going to have a session there where he talks specifically to our student athletes for a little while in the afternoon with those different groups and his experiences there with sports and athletics and going to school. And then he's also, will be here after school that day and he's going to spend about maybe forty-five minutes or an hour working with and, and talking to our staff and teachers too. So we'll have him for the full day. I know he's really looking forward to it. We're looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a fun day. That's a Friday and then we have a home basketball game that night, so. Add a little pep to the pep rally. I don't know if that's in the works or not. We might surprise them with that, so. Anyway, that, that'll be fun and, you know, we're able to do those things with some of our ESAR funding that we have still using it for that. Tomorrow afternoon, as Mrs. Roach said, there is a meeting and it will be members from Alfalfa, Grant, and Woods County, other board members, superintendents, county assessors, talking about have a warrant tax. Next month, myself along with our principals and counselors, I'm going to go to Omaha, Nebraska. And we're going to go to a two-day flagship event through capturing kids' hearts. And that organization, we're looking at getting with them this summer and having a two-day staff training in Oklahoma City and kind of use that as a little bit of a, hopefully just a retreat, but that program's very good. It's, it's all about developing relationships and just doing what's best, capturing kids' hearts. And so we're looking forward to that, getting that set up, going to that meeting in, in February. It's going to be the first step and us making some longer-term plans for what that program will look like for us. And it really is about an eighteen-month, two-year investment with that program. Not a lot of time, but I think it will be a very good investment for all of us and our kids will benefit the most. So again, we'd be using our ESAR funds to pay for those, those trainings and all of those things, so it would be funded through that grant to be able to do that. So other than that, you've heard all the good things from our principals and getting the year, new year started off and going. The semester always seems to fly by, so buckle up.
Do you have any on ten new business?
There's no new business.
All right. Number eleven, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Give me a second. Amanda? Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Time is eight eleven. Willie Spears, January twenty-seventh.
I don't think Judy gave you these. Give you those. Those are those capacity numbers that I went over.
Oh, right, thank you.
I don't think those are in there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Do you have the calendar?
It's in the toilet packet that she's.
Yeah, I think she might have had that in there, but I don't know if it was at the back.
That looks like it, yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, but I know you didn't have those others.
Right, thank you.